Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment for agenda items only, please. You do come up, please state your name. Okay, we'll close public comment. And we'll move into special presentations. This evening, we have Alec Sorban from Ray Prusor's office, who's going to give us an overview of the district's audit findings. Good evening, Alec.
Fine, thanks. I thought it went very well this year despite the pandemic. Our annual review of your procedures and internal controls and subsequent testing of transactions revealed no issues. Your staff is really to be commended for the job they did this year, working part-time as they did and getting everything done, keeping everything running smoothly. On the financial side, the district right now is in good condition. The general fund, assigned fund balance, that's 3.8% of your 2021 budget. I guess we don't own that 4% of the, we had fundraised a little max. So you're okay there at the moment. The reserves increased by a little over $250,000 this year as well. So as long as you're going to get your state aid, which I have read and heard that you are going to get it, without the 20% major cuts, you should be fine going forward. Lisa wasn't sure about knowing about this, but was in the newspaper that I read up on the whole thing there. So it appears that you aren't going to get it fully, which would be catastrophic if you didn't really. If you looked at the school lunch program, you would have seen a loss for the year of like $236,000, which your general fund did subsidize to keep the fund balance above board, above negative. Don't feel bad about this because this happens in many, many districts. What you had to do this year to feed the kids and pay people every year aren't really working, I guess. It's a normal course of events for this year.
Do we save questions to the end?
Oh, you can jump in any time you want.
All right. So on that note, because we do, we are continuing to give out food to those who need it, is that hitting that budget, the food budget? Or is that some type of federal assistance, that food coming through?
That's federal assistance for this 2020, 2021 year.
Oh, for this year, yeah. Yeah. Last year, you just got the normal, but a lot of them, I know you did it here. People were still getting paid with the benefits and all that, and you didn't have the income coming in.
Right.
You were given out, like a free lunch, I guess. It was, you know, great, but, you know, it didn't, it doesn't cost.
It is reflected here, right?
Yeah, it does cost the district money in the end.
Thank you.
Sure. As far as your budget goes, you spent 90, you utilized 96.6% of it, which is good. We had no issues with that. And we had no management letter comments or recommendations. Again, your operation is working very well under Lisa. Terry Treger is doing an excellent job. Your new payroll girl seems to be good. Okay. And Tom's payables is good as well. Well, that's really what I have for these major audit highlights. If anyone has any other questions, I'd be happy to help you out.
Any questions, guys?
I just wanted to touch briefly on your extra class funds. We do that audit as well, as you know. Terry took that over, and the treasurer took it over from Jill Greenman when she retired. She's done an excellent job with that. We only had one helpful comment for her, which I talked to her about, about profit and loss statements for fundraisers to make sure that things are above board. But everything else is running very, very well. It was a pleasure, even during the pandemic.
We're good, no questions?
Thank you.
Help.
No problem. Everybody say yes.
You too.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, our next presentation is Mr. Judge, our middle school principal, is going to give you an overview of the middle school.
Good evening, thank you, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update around scheduling at the middle school, because I know it's been a very hot topic in the community lately. So essentially, when we moved to get ready to reopen, we did have to recreate our master schedule, which in a non-pandemic, regular school world is about a six-week process. And so we were trying to implement a six-week process in a matter of days. So I want to publicly thank Nancy Jensen, Phyllis Lettery, Ms. Colburn, Connor Teddy, and even Mary Ann, who came to our rescue until 8:00 PM on Sunday night in order to try to get this off of the ground. So essentially, where the issue lies is that there is apparently some form of bug or glitch in our school tool system that has continually created issues that were not anticipated. So when we were developing the new master schedule, we had to do it in a training-production mode of School Tool, because we were still running our live version of the master schedule for the courses that we're running. And the program does not allow you to run two master schedules at the same time. So we had our one that was live, and then the training database where we were building our new master schedule. We worked tirelessly to get that as good as it could be. It ran in the mid-90%. If any of you have done master scheduling, that's what you aim for. That's wonderful. Once we got it to that point, we worked with the RIC, as well as Mindex, who is the company that controls School Tool, to work on, okay, so when it's time to switch our master schedule, how do we take what was in the training-production module that we created and transition our master schedule to make that live? And we went through all of that, and we thought we would be good to go. But unfortunately, on Friday, when we closed our prior master schedule to implement the new master schedule, the transition between the training module and our live module created many errors, and the information did not move over. And so because of that, the only option that we had was to hand-schedule all 400 students in the middle school over the weekend. So in terms of the moving over of the information, many students in their schedule only had one or two classes scheduled. And we had to go through every single student, one by one, to put their classes in by hand, make sure that all of their special educations and accommodations were met, that they got their music and all of the things that they select, their foreign language, things of that nature. And so when we found out that error was on Friday afternoon, Friday evening, we worked throughout the weekend to do the best that we could. And for Monday morning, we were able to get all the sixth-grade schedules as solidified as possible. And then we spent the remaining two days trying to fix the seventh and eighth-grade schedules. Unfortunately, this glitch that no one can seem to figure out, Mindex, the company that runs School Tool, the RIC, and the district, it keeps rearing its ugly head. So for example, yesterday, we had the seventh grade done. And today, we were going to work on the eighth grade. And then this morning, we came in, and many of the schedules that were hand-created yesterday no longer existed. So instead of moving forward and picking up where we left off, we had to go backwards and recreate schedules that we spent hours creating yesterday. So I'm happy to report that as of a couple of minutes before this board meeting, we have fully scheduled all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and their schedules should be as complete as possible for tomorrow, Wednesday. We are going to keep our fingers crossed that when we come in tomorrow, all those schedules do still exist. We do have backup paper copies, just in case something happens. We at least know the work that we did, so that we can move forward. Now, the next step in this process is now that these new schedules are out, you know, parents and students will look at them and might notice things that we did not. So right before the board meeting, I did send a school messenger to the middle school community explaining the situation. And I gave them a link to a form that if they believe there is a scheduling error that still exists, they can put their error in the form. It puts it in a spreadsheet, so that tomorrow we can start to go through and fix all of those errors. After I sent that, I watched some responses roll in, and Ms. Colburn was there. And one of the things that we realized is that while a lot of parents just received a schedule and they believe that it still has an error, it actually does not. We realize that we need to, even though I've done videos and I put things in with the mailings, there's still a misunderstanding on how to read the schedules. And so the majority of the responses that I saw come in quickly after the school messenger are parents and students believing that an issue exists in their schedule, and it actually does not. They're misreading their schedule. And so Ms. Colburn and I have already come up with a plan for what we can send out for parent and student education on how to read the very complex schedule in the morning, and hope that we can move forward. I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Just out of curiosity, this glitch, the company couldn't resolve that even with their, I know at the last meeting, they had some of their key people on it, but they couldn't resolve the glitch that was in the system?
No, not at that time.
And evidently, they still haven't really resolved it, correct?
So they resolved the situation that was not allowing school agent to populate the classes. And then when that was, when that issue was resolved, we did believe that all the issues were resolved. And we didn't know that there was another issue until we tried to move into our new master schedule. And considering that was on a Friday night and they don't work weekends, we were kind of on our own to just do our best to make it happen for Monday morning.
Just two thoughts to share on that. I'm familiar with these systems. Wasn't there a backup solution offered? In other words, you've got a database that's mush. They couldn't restore it from a prior known-good backup to get you where you were?
They would have restored us to the old master schedule, not the one that we were trying to.
All right. I think one of the pieces here was the sequencing. The fact that the schedules weren't built, and then you were trying to plug into a learning management system. So I think one of the feelings I want to share is when you're still doing schedules at the Friday before, school's supposed to start, it's too late. Those things have to be done much earlier. I know the complexity of the A/B, but it just seems if you're doing final runs the week before school, it's late.
I do understand that, but with all due respect, we do not know what staff we would have available to teach until that point in time. So we could not solidify schedules until that point.
So there were contributing factors that when you, you know, look, you get through it, you're getting through it, kids are in. When you take a look at these different cases, you say, what could we have done better? And just make sure we don't repeat those things, that's all.
Correct. Any other questions?
I do want to thank Mr. Judge and Mrs. Colburn and their staff. It certainly has been a very frustrating process. I appreciate Mr. Pocatius' remarks. And certainly, moving forward, we'll make sure that, you know, we're ahead of it a little, much more than we have.
Yeah, there's a little timeline. I would also question the RIC. We pay a large amount of money for the product and for support. And if we're not seeing it, then somebody should be having a conversation.
Yes, I'll be having those conversations.
Thank you.
I guess that's my other question and observation, just from the whole issue. If we knew we were having an issue, even though it agreed it's the weekend, you guys were still on the hook for it for Monday, you know, why wouldn't we hold them to that standard as well? You know, obviously, it's probably hard to get ahold of somebody, but if we've had those issues for the past however many weeks and we've been working with somebody, that should have been, you know, pushed on them as well. I certainly would be encouraging the district to have those conversations, because that's not acceptable for something, a product that we've paid for, the amount of issues that it has caused over and over again. And to be honest, sitting here today, we don't know what it could cause tomorrow. So, you know, just something that I think we should really hold them to, especially it's a service that we're making.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Judge.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. Thanks, Ms. Colburn.
Keep better, Mr. Judge.
Okay, another one of our presentations this evening. The superintendent's office will review our district goals.
Yes, so of course, last year, we adopted our 2019, 2020 district goals. So we wanted to review over that presentation. So what the board and the public will see, we wanted to keep it simple. Really, you'll see as we go through each of the four goals. And we just color-coded it. So the ones that are highlighted in yellow are the bullet points that we fully met. The ones highlighted in green were not fully met for various reasons, and we'll be discussing those. So we'll get started. So just as a review, last year's district goals for everyone. So goal one was to continue to improve student growth in the areas of overall achievement. Goal two was to create a comprehensive K-12 STEM program. Goal three was to continue to support social and emotional needs of our students. And goal four was to maintain the fiscal stability of Highland Central School District. So goal one, continue to improve student growth in the areas of overall achievement. You'll see that most of them are all in the yellow, and then we have two in green, and we'll talk a little bit about that.
So when investigating the K-8 math program, we were in the middle of doing that. We had looked at several different programs. We were really starting to use some of them, to try them out, and then COVID hit, and the world kind of changed. So we're still in that process. Even in the discussions that I had with teachers last year, we were interested in making it a multi-year program, so that we really felt that we found something that could work for everyone, you know, across the board. So we are still going to continue that work this year. Full implementation of Teachers College Writers Workshop. Yep, that is fully, we are fully into both Teachers College Reading and Writers Workshop K-5 with Fidelity. We still have our specialist who is coming. We did reduce the number of times that she's coming from once a week to once every two weeks now to the elementary school to continue to support that work. But it has been very successful across the board. K-12 Preparation from New York State Science Learning Standards, including preparation for the new New York State assessment. That again is a multi-year plan. We began that work actually two years ago. We're continuing that. I'm not real sure right at this moment if they will be, I don't believe that we will be starting the new science exam that we're supposed to go in place this year. I believe they put those off one more year. So we'll be working on that. And those would be the, they've moved from being a fourth-grade test to a fifth-grade test. And then the eighth-grade year remains the same, but it will be a different test. And then the science regents exams will be different as well, but that's still a ways out. So again, this is, this is a multi-year program. It's very much project and inquiry-based program. So again, we'll be continuing that work. Continued emphasis on project-based learning. Again, we've been doing that for several years now. You know, really looking at that on the lens of remote learning. That would be more of a focus for us this year. But we did do a lot of work, especially at the middle and high school level of that last year. Continue to expand our data literacy of teaching staff. Karen Brooks was very helpful in this process for us. She met frequently with small groups of teachers, grade levels, looking at our math benchmark assessment data, looking at some of our reading results. And then the last one, launched a district-wide education campaign regarding the importance of student participation. We had.
Yes, so Ms. Dudley Levick and I worked very closely with Holly Brooker at OCSIS, and we did prepare all the mailings and the postcards. So I believe the first round of postcards did go home. It was based off of kind of Back to the Future. It looked like that logo that said "Back to the Test." And I got a number of phone calls in support and a few against, which we expected. And then things changed. So we actually, the campaign is all ready to go again. Of course, the 3-8 testing and the region exams were canceled last year. We have no prediction of this year. But I would say the state's going to be hard-pressed to have similar tests, you know, when everything is so uncertain in the future. But my guess is that they're not going to make any decision this early in the school year. So we are all ready to go with that. And if there are 3-8 testing, we'll start the campaign over again. So the second goal is to create a comprehensive K-12 STEM program. Test 1-2? Yep. To create the high school, we did create a high school STEM teacher position, of course, two years ago. And he has been doing some fantastic work in that room. I know we've got an updated computer room as a result of some grants, but also from Selley Jacobson. So we are going to be inviting him in to tour that room that he helped create.
Sure. And then last year, we created the elementary school STEM teacher position, which was fantastic. It worked as another special for students. So once every six-day rotation at the elementary school, they were going to the STEM classroom. And again, she had created a curriculum where they were rotating between keyboarding, you know, computer programming kinds of skills, and STEM activities, inquiry-based activities. And she really, I was able to observe a few of those classes. And she had the students highly engaged. Even the youngest, the kindergartners, were doing really fun activities. But they were working together, using their brains to solve problems. It was really going well. Unfortunately, this year, we have put that program on hiatus. We needed that teacher, who is also elementary certified. She will be, she's teaching one of our remote sections of elementary school. So that program is on hold. We hope next school year, you know, we'll be back at it again, and she'll be doing that work. Again, given the parameters for this school year as well, it would have been a little bit more difficult to do that program in the same way. So we definitely needed to use her as an elementary school teacher instead. But we did provide a lot of training and time for our K-12 program to work together. I would say at least quarterly, if not more than that, we gave them time so that we really were developing a continuum with the idea that, you know, we weren't going to have to teach keyboarding when they get to the middle school, because they'll have had that by the time they're done at the elementary school. You know, so really building on those programs with the ideas that by the time they get to high school, they can start looking at the AP Computer Science programs, things like that. So hopefully, a little bit later in the year, when we invite Selley and Jacobson in, we can have you come check out the new STEM room. We did get all new furniture for in there, so it feels much more like a STEM classroom rather than kind of an old-school computer lab. And we also ordered several new pieces of equipment, including 3D printers. I think there's a laser cutter. There's some really handy stuff that's happening in there this year.
So our third goal was to continue to support the social and emotional needs of our students. We did provide QPR training, that is Question, Persuade, Respond, that Suicide Prevention Training for our faculty and staff. It was very successful. Really, after that, we had, you know, the person who does the training, who is excellent, he does have another full-time job. He and I kind of played a lot of phone tag. And then kind of the school year got away from us with the school ending early. So we do, hopefully, intend to continue with that program, perhaps in the spring of this year.
We did pilot the BMS Behavior Program, Social Emotional Support. It's a screening tool. What we found with that program is that it really wasn't giving us any better data than our own self-developed programs within the district. So we are not continuing with that program, but we did pilot it. We did continue our support of the Backpack Program. In fact, during our shutdown from March until the end of June, we were working with the Methodist Church here in town and giving food to about 20 families a week through the Backpack Program. And we continued to get donations from our staff and faculty, as well as community donations. And we hope to continue that this year as well.
Last year, we successfully piloted the ARCH program. As a reminder, that is the ultimate restorative collaborative high school. So initially, this is the program. It was after school from 2:30 to 5:30. This was for students on long-term suspensions for various infractions. The idea was to, instead of just having students be suspended for long periods of time, to give them the support that they need. And then they would work their way out of the program by doing a culminating project. So if, you know, if the incident involved, for example, vaping, you know, the student would do research on vaping and then do a presentation to a real audience about the dangers of vaping, so that they could, their suspension would be shortened. We had seven total students in the program. The most we had at one time was six. All those students, three of those students were seniors who absolutely would not have graduated if they were not in this ARCH program. They were behind on credits and perhaps, you know, one or more than somewhat disenfranchised with school, but with the support of the school groups. They also met with a counselor once a week. So we had three students who perhaps would not have graduated, did graduate. And the other four students are back in school. So our hope is that, we hope we'll never leave the program, but we would like to continue that program, given when the time comes. And then last year, we talked about implementing anonymous alerts. So that is a system using your cell phone to alert the school district of any potential bullying or incidents that they see in a variety of instances. We started the protocol with the company. It was very involved, and we had a lot of information to fill out. We were kind of doing it in April, in February, and then March, school closed. So we do plan on rolling that out, hopefully, by this January. And then maintaining the fiscal stability of the Highland Central School District. I don't know if, Mrs. Jack, you can chime in if you'd like, but of course, we maintained the fiscally sound budgets that met the educational needs of the students. So that was really, you know, kudos to the Board of Education and the Business Department for, you know, and working with all building administrators and central office to create a budget that the voters can support. We actually just had our audit committee meeting. We did review, we continue to review the district fund balances and reserves. We do have a reserve plan that we reviewed today. We do have a reserve plan that we reviewed today. We've created a long-term financial plan, Mrs. Leuck can expand upon certainly. And as you know, we continue to review our business operations for efficiency and our, the external audit, I believe, is on, on payrolls. That's finishing up.
Yes. So just briefly, at the next meeting, the Board of Education will be asked to review the fund balance and reserves plan. This is done annually in the fall, it's a new requirement as of 2016. The long-range financial plan, that's an ongoing process and we're working with our financial consultants, also looking at the capital reserve and the future of the capital reserve and what it will be used for. And the review of business operations. We had two key staff members retire this year. We have replaced those positions. And we've also transitioned to Sullivan Bosse's to provide support for our WindCap software and that has been proving beneficial to everyone in the business office.
And when I get to my superintendent's report, I'll hand out just a draft of district goals for the 2021 school year. I'd like for you to, I don't have to review it tonight, I'm going to hand it out to you tonight to review between now and the next meeting. We'll have further discussion on that at the next board meeting on the 20th. Any questions about the review of the district goals from last year?
I just have one question for Lisa before I forget. Have you heard of any indication from the state that there might be a reduction in future building aid or transportation aid?
Absolutely. I have heard that there will be a reduction in overall state aid. And Al stood here tonight and said that he had heard the opposite, so right now we can see.
Then again, you, the Board of Education creates goals, but really the goals cannot be reached without cooperation and collaboration of the Board of Education, with the administration, the faculty, the staff, but truly everyone who helps make those goals a reality. So I do want to thank everyone.
So moving forward, what's the process for our 2020 goals?
So I can do it now or I was going to wait till my report. I have just some draft ideas. I'd ask the board at the last board meeting if you had any ideas to send it to me or to Sarah. And then we kind of put together our thoughts of, you know, some of the goals that we're going to, some aspects of this last year's goals. Certainly many of the goals kind of continue. You always obviously want to maintain the fiscal stability. But we're going to give out kind of a draft just for the board to kind of digest between now and the next board meeting and we can have a more complete discussion on next year's goals at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I believe it will be somewhat difficult to really tame some of these goals being the situation we are in with both in-person and remote learning. So I, I think whatever we gain on, on district goals, whatever we accomplish is going to be a plus. All right, so we'll, during your report, you'll give us the goals and I guess have time to digest that and have discussion at our next meeting. Okay. Is there any questions, Superintendent, right now on the review of the district goals? All right, moving on to acceptance of reports. Being resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves and acknowledges reviewing the following reports. Board of Education meeting minutes, September 9, 2020. Playing audit report, September 2020. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second. Play Heather. Discussion?
I'm going to, that's staying from the board meeting minutes. I can't open the document. It says it's blocked.
Are you logged in, Sue?
Yeah. Actually, Sue, that did happen to me. I forgot to mention to you, I just went to the actual board. If that does happen, for some reason, something was wrong up with the PDF. I went on to that actual meeting in our listing and you can check and look at the minutes from there, just in case it happens in the future too. But we can maybe-
I'll, I'll see when that happens.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie?
Yes.
Do you have any issue with taking personnel as a block from A through F? Most of them are appointments. Just a reminder that we are approving or appointing coaches and that only becomes effective if the sports season is fulfilled.
I'm good with it as a block.
Everybody okay? All right, can I entertain a motion to accept our personnel, A through F, as a block? Camille, second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie?
Mr. President, we do have one of our people just got appointed. So Heidi Reel, if you could just stand up and just introduce yourself and tell the board what you'll be teaching.
Sure. Hi, I'm Heidi Reel. Nice to meet you all. It's been a wonderful few days that I've been at the middle school. The kids have been amazing. It's a wonderful atmosphere in the school, very welcoming, and I'm privileged to be part of it. So thank both, thank you both of you. So I will be teaching technology. My husband is here, he's an IT specialist, so I have the family a lot around, so I'm very excited about being with this sixth, seventh, and eighth graders.
Thank you very much, Maureen.
Other business in operation? Budget transfers? Being resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves the following budget transfer for the 2020, 2021 school year is presented to the board at this meeting. Budget number 2488 for $261,930. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Sue. Discussion?
Could you just review that, Mr. Leuck, from the board and the public?
Sure. Of the 261,000, 140 is for unemployment insurance and the remaining 120,000, excuse me, 65,000 is for teacher salaries, just reallocation. Most of that is due to six three-stipends. Librarian was budgeted in one area, was just repoing to the entry school. And we had some guidance work done over the summer prior to school and that was definitely due to COVID-19 and scheduling.
Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie? Being resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, accepts a donation from Phil D'Angelo, a Highland alumnus. Fifty-five copies of the book titled "The Hard Hat: Twenty-One Ways to Be a Great Teammate", an 1189 piece plus stack, for a total donation worth of $706.20. Purpose will be for varsity football team at Highland Central School District. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Sue. Discussion?
I'd like to thank Mr. D'Angelo for his very generous donation. I know that Coach Lopik and the staff will be working with the varsity football team during a book study on this.
I'm sure we'll send him out. Thank you.
Yes, we will.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie? Musco Sports Lighting. Being resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves the purchase of installing and the supply of a sports cluster system with a total light control for a cost of $45,000 for Musco Sports Lighting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Tom. Discussion?
Where are they being installed?
So this went through the Support Services Committee. So we'll be putting new lights on the top of the existing poles that are on the new practice field.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it was a reasonable price and saved some money if not having to install the base of the poles.
Yeah, that's great.
Just being able to increase the lighting capacity for that practice field. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie? Adoption of the Annual Independent Audit 2019, 2020. Being resolved, the Board of Education and Highland Central School District acknowledges receipt of and accepts the annual regular report of the district's auditors, Raymond G. Prueser, CPA, PC for the school year 2019, 2020, and the corrective action plan. It gives its authorization to file this resolution with the Commissioner of Education. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Heather. What committee is satisfied?
Good job, Lisa.
Yeah, we see that, right? Okay, no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
So Carrie? Thank you. Sarah?
All right, good evening, everyone. There's a few things that I want to review with you. First of all, if you look at our district website, we have posted a kind of a timeline of the Climate and Culture, Racial Equity Initiative. Basically goes over what we've done so far and the near future of what we're anticipating we're going to be doing in the next couple of months. Right now, it's right on the front page when you, when you log right on the website, but its permanent home is under Academics and Curriculum. There's a specific link for Climate and Culture, Racial Equity Initiative. So, so far, we've gone through this the last couple of board meetings, but in August, we appointed Dr. Jessica Block as the contractor to support our initiative. We announced the parent focus groups. We had a committee of teachers who began to look at a curriculum review rubric. In September, Dr. Block spoke at our superintendent's conference day to introduce himself to our staff. He also is conducting the last of the three parent focus groups this evening. He did one for the elementary school parents. There was about six parents for that one. Last Tuesday, he conducted the middle school parents group. Again, there was about five or six parents for that. Tonight, there were, I believe, six parents on that list. He will be, his next day in district is October 14th, so we'll be meeting with him to talk about the results of, of those focus groups. We will be scheduling another series of parent focus groups, but I need to talk with him to arrange dates before then. We also, last, we, our last board meeting, Dr. Block introduced himself to the Board of Education and Community with a presentation that outlined the goals that he put together after talking with the focus groups, talking with, reading the testimonies that people brought to the district in July. And he really narrowed it down to three main goals. School climate, curricular review and updates, and teacher-staff diversity. I'll talk about those again in a few minutes. That was, that was the highlight really of his introduction. And then we did begin discussing a district-level Climate and Culture, Racial Equity Committee. I'm going to talk about that in a few minutes and the application process for that. And like I said, Dr. Block, he will be in district now two times a month. We have already scheduled his dates through December at this point. The next time he's here, he will begin meeting with groups of teachers and potentially students as well, depending on, we won't, we won't have large groups of students, so we'll probably wait with that until later in the month for, for meeting with students. But he will be meeting with staff in next week. And then looking forward, so October, again, the last of the parent focus groups, we will be accepting applications for the district-level committee. Again, I'm going to talk about that in a moment. With the idea that we will have our first meeting in November. Before that, the Board of Education will, will read through the applications and choose the, the members of that group. And then we're also going to be looking at a climate and culture, culture survey to do with students, staff, and the community, parents. So that will all be happening between October and November. We'll continue to update this timeline as we move through the year. And of course, once we get that climate and culture committee formed, that will really be driving that timeline much more. So moving on to the committee, what we've done is we've created two drafts of, one of them is the actual application. I wanted to pass this out. Again, this is a draft. We can have a conversation about this. And then I also did more of a description of our initial thought on what that committee would look like and consist of. And my thought is that we will post both of these together, the application as well as this rationale, so, so people can under, have at least an introduction to what would be expected in the, in the committee. So the, the first page, that, that rationale, Highland Central School District strives to foster an environment of inclusivity for all students and members of the Highland Central School District community. Our goal is to build a district in which all students feel they belong, regardless of their actual or perceived color, disability, economic status, ethnic group, gender, national origin, race, religion, religious practice, sex, sexual orientation, or weight. That language is taken from DASSA. Again, this is just the first rationale. I think once we have a full committee, they'll be able to put together, you know, a more community-form rationale. And, and the idea of this committee is to move forward this initiative, to do the research, to get an idea of our climate and culture, where we are with right now, and then where we would like to go and what things we'd like to do moving forward. I took the suggestions of Dr. Block as our three initial priorities. That school climate, create a school climate that ensures all students feel that they belong. And then looking at curriculum, evaluate and update the curriculum to ensure that it adequately reflects the diversity of our global community. And then, of course, the third is teacher diversity, recruit and retain a more diverse teaching staff. So those are still pretty tall orders, but I think it gives us a direction and a structure for the work moving forward. It's not limited to those. Again, once we get together as an entire group, we'll be able to either refine or expand, depending on the situation, what direction we would like to go. We did talk about the membership of the committee at the last Board of Education meeting, so I listed that out under this rationale. Up to one Board of Education member and possibly one alternate member. Four community-at-large members, including, and this was a suggestion that Camille had given us, including one recent graduate from the last three years, so that you have someone, you know, who has had, some, has had the full K-12 experience here. An elementary, middle, and high school parent. One middle and one high school student. We can discuss an elementary student, but I don't know that that's the most appropriate. I think maybe if we do a school-level committee, that could be a more of a focus group of elementary students. One elementary, middle, and high school instructional staff member- Uh, one elementary, middle, and high school instructional staff member, one elementary, middle, and high school non-instructional staff member, um, one elementary, middle, and high school administrator, central office administrator, and then, of course, the superintendent as an ex-official member. And then the back is really the process. So, uh, filling out the application, all of these positions, or all of these membership on the committee would be determined by the Board of Education. And appointed by the board, the only ones really that we didn't think would necessarily need an application would be the Board of Education member and the building administrator. There's really only two to choose from in each building, so I think we'll go with those. We would like this to be an anonymous process, so the application will be sent to Lisa Serneglia, our district clerk. She will then take it, anonymize it, basically take off all the identifying information so that the board can look at each application without knowing who it is connected to. The initial term for the, um, committee, my thought was the initial term would be for the duration of the twenty twenty-one school year, so November of twenty twenty through June of twenty twenty-one. And then at that point, we can, and again, the committee can make more decisions about what they think the, the duration of a commitment would be and all that kind of thing. With the idea that our first meeting will be Tuesday, November seventeenth at about six o'clock. So that will be, that actually is one of the requirements really of membership is that you can attend that first meeting. So then if you look at the application, uh, the beginning of the application gives you the directions for submitting it to Lisa Serneglia. Uh, our application deadline is Wednesday, November fourth, which is, you know, a little less than a month to submit that. And the idea is that on November tenth, which is our first November, our only November Board of Education meeting, this gives time for Mrs. Serneglia to do whatever she needs to do to anonymize them and get them ready so that at that board meeting in exact session, the Board of Education can go through the applications and go through the process of choosing members. Uh, so then, of course, people do need to supply their name and contact information that Mrs. Serneglia will remove. You know, they'll need to explain or check the box for what part of this or what position on the committee they would be. And then the back is a series of short answer questions. What is your primary reason for wanting to serve on the climate and culture racial equity committee? What do you think are the most pressing concerns facing our district in regards to racial equity? What life experiences have shaped your decision to do this work regarding racial equity? Do you have any experience working in a committee? Describe. Aren't you able to commit time to research outside of the monthly meetings? And I would say again, I don't know that the district level committees would, committee would necessarily meet monthly. I think that's more likely that it would be bimonthly, and these building level committees would meet on the off, off month. It is a big commitment for people to try to do once a month, so as of right now, that's, that's really our thought. And then people can, um, add other pages or resume if they would like to the, to the application. So I know we went through that very quickly, but if you have any initial thoughts or concerns or things you'd like to add or take away, please let me know now.
Would it be possible to have this go out on school messenger as well?
Yes. Yes, so that's, um, so the plan was once, once we were all set and you're ready for this to go, we would put it on social media, we would, it would be posted on the website, and then, yes, we would send it out through school messenger, um, as well as any other avenues that we might have to, to send it out.
Do you have a timeline of when this is going to be put out on social media?
So, um, that would depend on, on your decision tonight. So if the board decides that they would, that they're good with this.
We'll do it tomorrow.
We can do it tomorrow. If you would like time to think about it a little bit and get back with me, we can set a timeline for you to, to give us that feedback. I certainly, our next.
We wouldn't want to wait all the way to the next board meeting, I don't think. So if we wanted time to review and make any changes, you could email Sarah and let us know, let's say by Friday.
Yeah.
Time is of the essence, so I think we need to get started.
I see that the, the meetings are going to be on Tuesdays. They won't conflict with board meeting because.
No. No, the idea was that that is a day that very often, at least, members of the school community have saved, kind of, so without Tuesday might be a good day to do it. But again, I think once, you know, once you get the whole committee together, they could make other decisions, but as you know, when you're on a committee, it's best to have set, set days where people can plan on it. So if they can't do two, you know, if the entire group can't do Tuesdays, then we'll probably go to something else, but.
So by December, it could be a twenty-one person committee?
It'll be about a twenty. With the idea that we know that sometimes committees, not every month, they're for every meeting, so that at least gives you good representation.
All of them moving forward.
I agree with that. What about the, the other end of the world over there?
So, so the.
The other end of the world.
Could everybody please speak into the mic, because it's kind of difficult to hear from both ends. Just to move this forward, uh, like our superintendent just mentioned, let's give it until Friday. If they don't, if Sarah and Tom do not receive any emails from, from you, any additions, deletions to, to the process, then we won't wait until our next meeting. We can go ahead and move on it. We don't need a board resolution for this, so, uh, as long as everybody's okay with it, take the time from now until Friday. If you have any comments, email them on to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and we'll move it forward. Just before we go, so I don't lose this thought, I just want to make it clear to everyone that this initiative that we're taking on has a timeline. And I know when Dr. LeBlanc was here, when you looked at his presentation, it goes out until June of twenty twenty-one. This is not a process that we're going to rush through. And I know the superintendent made a comment earlier in this process that this is not a sprint, it's a marathon. So it's going to take a while to move this process through, and there is going to be no need to rush into it. I think we put this committee together, uh, like Sarah had said, there's probably twenty, twenty-one members that, that could be on the committee, uh, and we'll move it forward. So everything right now is, uh, contingent upon what happens with school, because if something changes and we have to go all remote and we have to go back to Zoom meetings and so forth, it could delay the process a little bit, so everybody has to be aware of that. And I appreciate the effort that our superintendent, assistant superintendent, and, and all those involved have put forward for this initiative, even with all the work that's going on to try to bring school into session this September. So I want to thank both of you for that. And also, at this point, thank you for, uh, the considerable effort and time that you put into, uh, making school a reality again. I mean, we sent everybody home back in March and not knowing when we're going to bring students faces back into the classroom, and we did it this Monday, and hopefully we can continue to do that, do that and bring everybody back into a school setting. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I have one more thing. Different topic, um, and that is, uh, our annual review of our school safety plan. That needs to have a thirty-day public comment period that, so we will be posting that on the website Friday. It really, there's not significant changes from last year's other than a few names and numbers. I will be sending you that, that's the, the public part of the school safety plan. I'll be sending to the board both the public as well as the confidential, um, building level plan by the end of the week. The thirty-day public comment period, uh, will end just before our Tuesday, November tenth meeting, so we will have a public, public comment hearing for the safety plan at that meeting, um, and then you'll be asked to approve, approve those plans. So just to let you know that that will be coming to you. Um, again, no significant change to any of it other than updating names and phone numbers, really. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Sarah?
Like, it's happened a comment, um, you know, in the, in the art closures, I still will hope that we can continue to meet, um, if any would meet virtually, so if there's a closure, you know, we have, we'll know the way, the last time, still we're going to push through through, uh, using the virtual communication.
Mr. President, thank you. Uh, so as you mentioned, uh, we did open schools yesterday to in-person students. Uh, keep in mind, we are doing kind of, as we call it, a soft opening. So this week it is students in grades K three, six, and nine. Again, the, we have a lot of great ideas, a lot of great plans in place, but, uh, you know, you have to make sure that they work in, in reality. So, uh, really so far, it's just been the two days, so both cohorts have been in, and as far as the transportation, you know, it is low numbers of students, but the transportation and just the social distancing, everything is going very well. The students are very, at least the students I saw, they're very, very happy, very excited to be back in school, as is the faculty, so very happy to have students back. So again, next week, we'll add grades one, four, seven, ten, and eleven. As we knew would happen, um, out of an abundance of caution, we did, um, yesterday at the middle school and today at the elementary school, we did, the nurses did have to send students home. If you've ever seen the list of symptoms, uh, for possible COVID, you know, they range, obviously, we know the fever and, you know, difficulty breathing, but, you know, just things, a headache, runny nose, sleepy, um, I mean, these are things that most students exhibit on a regular day. But out of, out of an abundance of caution, you know, nurses did send some students home. So I want to just explain to the board and to the public, again, you know, what does that mean, when a student goes home for suspected? So the, uh, we worked then, first, after calling Mrs. Allemic and myself, you know, or before, uh, you know, they're calling the parent and the Department of Health. And then the Department of Health weighs in on the case. You know, the nurse will describe what the symptoms are, and depending on the situation, it's really, it's on a case-by-case basis. But, uh, really for the cases we've had, you know, the, the Department of Health is really saying for, uh, that, you know, for these cases, the parent simply needs to go to their, you know, own physician, their family doctor or a doctor. And if the doctor determines that there's no need for a test, then no test is necessary. All that parent would need is then just a note from their doctor saying that they've met and they've been cleared. If the doctor then, you know, you know, orders a test, then certainly that test will happen, but, you know, there is no, I know, you know, we hear about, you know, the contact tracing and closing the schools and sanitizing and removing the students. Actually, really, you know, by the Ulster County Department of Health's own rules, you don't need to do that immediately unless it's a, you know, clear-cut case. You really, there's a forty-eight hour waiting period, so, you know, none of the contact, contact tracing kicks in or, or closing buildings, anything like that, for at least the first forty-eight hours. So again, the two cases that we've had, two students that went home, you know, they were, they showed mild symptoms of some of the things on the list, but again, you know, we are going to err on the side of caution. In Camden tomorrow, we're going to view, you know, I, I don't, I'm not sure if we're going to be sending a letter home every single day, every time someone goes home, though, because they also don't want to, on, on one end, we don't want to, you know, cause a panic, we also don't want to desensitize, so every time you get a letter, you just ignore it. So we're going to kind of tighten up those procedures a little bit, working with the principals and, and the nurses. Before I get to the, uh, draft of next year's district goals, I did want to give you an update on sports. I did have a section nine executive committee today. As you're aware, that, um, winter sports for section nine are starting on November thirtieth. There's, we don't expect any further guidance from New York State until at least probably December thirtieth, so nothing's really going to change until after winter sports begin. Now, keep in mind, from the, from the state, the high-risk sports are basketball, wrestling, and competitive cheer. So those sports can only practice. There'll be no scrimmages, there'll be no games, there'll be no contests, and they're only supposed to have incidental contact. There is no waiver on physicals as they did, so, so for the fall, they waived physicals. We didn't have fall sports, but there will be physicals that will be required for winter sports, and I know Mr. Alfonso's here and his, his department will be taking care of that. As far as, so what sports do we have then here in Highland? So again, as a reminder, we do have, uh, boys' girls' basketball, we have wrestling, we have competitive cheer, who will all be able to practice, and on, on some of these, it's really going to be just conditioning practicing because you can't have contact. Uh, we will have our bowling team, we will have winter track or indoor track. The one issue with that, though, West Point is not allowing outside groups to use the facilities, so if you weren't aware, all of our indoor tracks meets are at West Point, and their, their rules came out, and every single person using the facilities has to have a negative test within, you know, forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours prior to coming to West Point. That's just not reality for any schools to do that. So they've still, they're still working on, you know, possible facilities, um, but the more reality is that, you know, they'll probably be looking at, you know, in good weather, if we get it, perhaps have some outdoor competition. As far as some teams, so, uh, in conjunction, you know, Mr. Alfonso, you know, uh, in conjunction with kind of his committee, but also, uh, the high school principal and assistant principal and myself for the winter, because, you know, the, we still don't know what's, you know, what the future is going to be like as far as COVID and what the conditions are going to be. So we're not going to allow, I wanted the board to know and, and hopefully to support, we're not going to have for the winter season, we're not going to have any shadowing. So shadowing is when someone from another school, you know, practices with us. So, you know, we don't want to be mixing schools, students from other schools with our students. So we do traditionally sometimes have some wrestlers from Marlboro, so there's one, I believe there's at least one student who is interested in shadowing, but it's hard to say that we're not going to have shadowing for this winter season. We're also not going to combine any teams for this season. In the past, we have done that. So this is for winter only at the moment. So, uh, in the past, we have done boys' swimming, that's Highland and Marlboro combining, uh, and then competing at Marlboro, so if we do have swimmers, we're not going to combine, combine them with Marlboro. And then we also have gymnastics, so our gymnastics in the past has combined Highland, Antioch, and Sorghides, and then they compete at Sorghides. We'll also, we will not be doing that for the winter. Any mergers for the spring are still up to question. So obviously, we know that we merge with Marlboro for the boys and girls across, but, you know, we haven't made, we have only made the decision for the winter season at this time. So that's the update on sports. I don't think you have any questions before I move on?
Just a question on the combining. So for example, to swim, we typically swim with Marlboro, so you're saying we're not combining, so the boys' swimmers will not have an opportunity to swim? Is that right?
Correct, unless there's something more, Mr. Alfonso, you can chime in.
Yeah, real quick, we get a, a tetaplay list for, for the students of, uh, student outfit to find that, and what came back out of swimming and gymnastics, um, it was one and zero. So we don't really have enough even to participate. Most of those kids graduated last year. So off of that intent to play list, um, you know, we're not really taking it away from anybody. It's just that I don't think we should be promoting that, you know, we're offering these sports if we really can't practically do this.
No, thank you very much.
Just one quick question. What if being that we only have one or two winter sports? Are, are you going to be overwhelmed with participants, say bowling? How are we going to?
We're going to have a heck of a bowling team. No, uh, in bowling.
We have about three hundred.
Right, so. And you can correct if I'm, if I'm wrong, Mr. Alfonso, but in bowling. And you can correct if I'm, if I'm wrong, Mr. Alfonso, but in bowling, so you only have, only five bowlers compete, and then you have usually two alternates or two people working. So there's really, is a limited number, so usually there is cuts on bowling, usually only have seven...
Usually seven or eight.
Seven to 10.
Two teams.
At the most, yes. It's just...
So you have a limit on, on bowling?
Yeah, there is a limit based on also us practicing, because the bowling house only can give a certain amount of length to practice. So the rosters are usually between five and nine, five and 10, boys and then girls.
It's certainly encouraging, you know, a lot of students, winter track is great, it's always traditionally, it's not just been for, you know, the students who are the year-round runners, but it's also for all athletes and all students to, just to, you know, exercise and get in shape and...
What about spectators? Where are the rules regarding spectators?
So they haven't come out with the rules yet, correct? We just reviewed that today. So there's probably, it might be a local decision on the spectators, so we haven't discussed that yet. So some schools have talked about, you know, that they'll have, you know, you can have, let's say, two spectators for every one athlete, and then they would social distance, but we haven't gotten to those conversations yet, because at the moment, there's, again, this is for winter I'm talking, so there's, if there's not going to be any competitions in basketball, or wrestling, or cheer, the bowling is going to be limited to, you know, I'm not sure how big a crowd they get at bowling.
They do get a good crowd.
Okay, all right, so we might have to limit that crowd. So we have, we haven't, haven't made that determination yet, but the state has not come down with any strict, you know, guidelines. I think they're living up to a local decision.
Yeah, I heard something where it was like, uh, two, two people per, per play. We haven't really, in my mind, I've thought it through, but we really haven't put anything on paper yet, because we're not at that point, in my opinion.
And then again, the fall sports would begin, they're talking about either the last week or so in February or March 1st.
I had a question about an athletic trainer. I believe through the budget process, I know the position was removed, but we had talked about, as we got into the year, that might be reevaluated. Are we going to have athletic training services for these athletes?
So that's something we would have to, you know, Mrs. Dudley Lemic and I and Mr. Alfonso would have to sit down with Mrs. Jelek and really look at the budget, see if the, if it's warranted in the budget. We haven't had a lot of extra, additional COVID expenses, and then we'll look at, you know, we'll also look at the availability of, of a trainer, either the one we had or another one.
Thank you.
So we handed out, again, a draft. This is just to get you thinking about district goals. I'll just read the, I'll go through, for the public, I'll read the, just the goal itself, I won't read the entire document out with all the bullets. Those are just, the bullets are, you know, the things we're going to do, but I wanted you to have some time to digest it. So Goal One, plan and implement an educationally sound and safe reopening of schools for students, faculty, and staff. So that is going on right now. Goal Two, continue to improve student growth in the areas of overall achievement. Goal Three, continue to support the social and emotional needs of our students. Goal Four, creating comprehensive racial equity initiative. And Goal Five, maintain the fiscal stability of the Highland Central School District.
So if you want to have discussion this evening, or you want to be able to digest this, and, and we'll come back for our next meeting and continue the discussion, possibly adopt the district goals for 2020.
Right, we can have as much discussion as you'd like now. Again, my thought was, take some time, because I don't, I don't want, I don't like to just give you something and then we're going to act on it. Review over some of the, the bullets there, the steps that we're going to do to achieve the goal, and then, you know, feel free to contact us in between this and the next board meeting, if you'd like to add, delete, or modify any of those, and then we can discuss it in further detail and more detail at the next board meeting and perhaps adopt them.
Is that fair enough?
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Tom, if you could just back off to when the principals have to send a child home, am I understanding correctly, it's incumbent upon the parent to get a doctor's note? They have to get a doctor's note for that child to come back?
Yes, thank you for that clarification, Mrs. Gilmore. So the parent has to go to the doctor and for, in 48 hours, and get a doctor to review and get a clearance. You know, my hope is that when they go to the doctor, that they, you know, that the clearance is, yes, this is fine, the student simply was, you know, had a runny nose and a sore throat, this is not anything you have to worry about, and then that parent can come back. If the parent doesn't, for whatever reason, let's say the parent, you know, refuses to go to the doctor, you know, then it has to be treated, they have to quarantine for 14 days, and it will then kick in the protocols of the contact tracing, because we, it has to be treated as if it's a positive case.
Oh my goodness. Thank you.
So we, it is imperative that we get the full support of the parents and guardians. I, I understand that, you know, it can be frustrating when school's just starting and a child could be getting, sent home for, you know, because they have a sore throat and a headache, because kids have that all the time, everyone does. But in this time, we ask for their cooperation, their patience.
And again, encourage parents, please don't send their students to school if they are sick, because some of these common childhood illnesses have many of the same symptoms, and so then we might send them home, and then they'll have to go to the doctor, and they'll have to do the whole, the whole thing. Whereas, you know, if you as a parent understand that it's a normal cold, and you can keep the child home for three days and they'll be fine, you know, it skips some of those steps. Also, if the student has allergies, and you know that they have allergies, please let us know that, so, you know, get the doctor note to the, to the nurse, so that we can have that on file, and so that if a, you know, a teacher who doesn't necessarily know that sends the child to the office, at least the nurse has that information, and can say, is this completely normal? You know, go give this student a Benadryl or whatever, and, and avoid some of that inconvenience of, for the parent of having to come in, and perhaps for all of us having to go through this whole process. So please, please, if, if your child is not feeling well, please do not send them to school. The other thing I just wanted to let people know, and I can share this, an email that the Ulster County Department of Health sent us late last week, a set of flow charts for, you know, if a student, you know, if they have these symptoms, what happens? And it really, it's really nice, it goes through many different scenarios, but it's students, it's faculty, pretty much every, every group, you know, this is what happened, what do we do next, kind of things. I mean, the nice thing was, when we got it, it really reflected what we had been saying how long that we were going to do, but it's also just kind of a handy-dandies thing to have beside, or on our desk, or beside the phone, to be able to go through that whole process and to talk through even with staff, who, you know, whose significant other might have been exposed at some point, you know, like, there's so many levels of impact of all of this, that it, that it was very helpful, but I can send it to people if they'd like to see it.
Any other questions for the superintendent?
I just have a quick question regarding substitutes. I guess, you know, we've always thought about substitutes in, in the manner of in-person instruction, right? What happens, have we thought through the situation if we have a teacher who is out, you know, especially one of our hybrid teachers teaching those classes? How we would, you know, I guess, get a substitute teacher up to speed in order to make sure that we're not losing instruction time with those students?
So with our hybrid teachers, those who are teaching in person, that will handle like a normal substitute situation. So I did a training last week, I don't see the last week or the week before, where I, I needed to do the COVID safety updates for all of our current subs, and then we added about five or six to our, our sub school. So I went through, through that whole process, so for the hybrid, it's just like we normally would do. It becomes a little bit more tricky for our remote people. You know, our hope is that for our remote teachers, unless they're completely incapacitated by their illness, they're, they're probably going to teach anyway, since they're not impacting other people. That's really what we found in the spring, and that's what we found kind of already. If it becomes a situation where they're going to be out for a couple of weeks, then we'll work to find a sub to, you know, bring them up to speed on the technology parts of it. But we're really, you know, from a per diem standpoint, we don't want to be sharing passwords and all that kind of thing so much, so, so we're trying to avoid the three-o. You know, in some cases, that could be that the teacher says that it's an asynchronous day at that point, and here's work to do on that day, if it, you know, if we need to for, for some reason, but it's not like we could just be handing out passwords and things kind of really heavily to those substitutes. So we're, we're working through that, and, but so far, we, we've had, I mean, we haven't had a lot of people, obviously, that have called, because it's only been two days, but we do have people who are willing.
Yes.
I was afraid we wouldn't even have people.
But as you can imagine, though, the list is not as big as it usually is, because, you know, some of, many of our subs are, you know, more mature and, you know, don't want to be, you know, in, in a school, understandably. And all school districts, and I've spoken with other superintendents, they're facing the same issues.
Yeah, and I guess my concern is just, you know, other situations, you know, other than illness too, you know, if they've had a personal situation, you know, definitely in the family or something like that, where they're going to be out for a few days, and just making sure that we're thinking about those situations, you know, ahead of time, just in terms of what we would do to make sure those students are still, you know, not going maybe five days or three days or five days with asynchronous, because we have a, you know, but agreed in, in terms of, you know, making sure that we're not handing out passwords and stuff like that, we don't want to do that either. So just brought it up just as a kind of food for thought, really.
Okay, any other questions? All right, the Board of Education, new business, at our next board meeting on the 20th, we're going to do a, our, our building tours, we're going to start at the elementary school on that Tuesday, the 20th, at 5:45, and then we'll come back up here for the meeting at 7 o'clock. So you'll get to see the upgrades of the recent capital project and anything else that's changed at the elementary school. All business, just a reminder, Thursday, this Thursday, 6 p.m., is the Ulster County School Boards Association meeting. I believe Sue and Robert are going to be...
Yes, and I'll do a short presentation. They'd ask the districts to volunteer to do, just a five-minute presentation, just about, you know, reopening of schools, basically a, a challenge and a success story.
Right. Anyone have anything for the good welfare of the district? Just a reminder to all, we, we sent you out a couple of emails for upcoming evaluations, so please jump on that, so we can have that discussion at our next meeting. All right, we'll open the meeting up to public comment.
Hello, how's everybody? Silly Godly. Firstly, thank you all for all your hard work, especially you, Mrs. Dudley Lemic, you, Mr. Bon Jovi. The first step to increase transparency was seeing that timeline on the website. It's looking great, really prominently displayed, that was really awesome to wake up to, so thank you. And the videos from the last board meetings have been posted, which is fantastic news. I just had a clarifying question, I think you, Mrs. Dudley Lemic, could answer it, as to the blind application process? So would that be blind name and then other identifying features, such as like, perhaps somebody's sexual orientation, gender identity, race? Is that something that would still be included on the application when y'all are looking at it?
We did not ask for that information on the, on the application. So that's something for the board to think about in, in giving feedback?
Yeah, I think absolutely that's something everyone on the board should consider, how somebody's background, how they identify in those ways could help, maybe, you understand how they might contribute to the committee in a more sufficient way. So that might be something that we could consider adding. I did also want to express...
Just, I do want to clarify, there is one of the, one of the short answer questions does ask what life experiences have shaped your decision to do this work, so that would be a place...
Yeah, for sure. And I wanted to also sort of reiterate your concern about having an elementary schooler on this committee. Of course, I would hope that the content would be a little bit over 11-year-old level. You know, there's some very bright 11-year-olds out there, however, hopefully they don't necessarily understand these issues to the degree that would be necessary. So I, I would definitely urge you all to consider adding additional high school students or additional middle school students. I do fear that if it is a committee of 15 to 23 people, and there's only two students on there, and they're in this room full of big bad adults, and I don't know what I'm doing here, and I've never been on a committee before, I mean, maybe some of them have, that'd be pretty impressive, but it, there will be that intimidation factor, so I would think about increasing the number of students.
The other part of this, something we discussed last week, or at the last meeting, was that this, this is sort of a blanket committee for individual committees at each building, so I think the building committees would be an opportunity for more students to be involved at that point. So then, the student who's on the district-level committee is representing the conversation or the action that's already been happening within their building, so perhaps they, they're coming to it, but a little bit more behind them in a way.
So each of the students who would be on the broader committee would also be on the smaller committees? Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, there's things to be said for both of those options. We don't want the committee to get too large, but certainly would be great to maybe have those smaller committees in place with more students and have that reporting factor, but if it's only this larger committee and there's only stu, two students on that, I don't know, I certainly would have been scared at 15. All of y'all are very nice-looking, but would have freaked me out. And then, my only other question was about some parents who never received a response about any of the focus groups, and they are wondering if they would get some type of priority when the next focus groups are established.
Can you have them reemail us? Because I, I thought that we responded to everyone, so...
Email you or email Jacobson?
Email Harley Jacobson, and it's S E N. Sometimes people might have put S O N instead or something like that, so...
I caught that in the video today, I was like, oh, I wouldn't have guessed that was the spelling.
So, yeah, double-check, but she's phenomenal, so I, I don't, she doesn't miss things often, so please have them reschedule, absolutely, because we really only had about five or six for each of the, the parent focus groups, so definitely, we'd love to hear from them.
All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. I don't believe you have any executive session items, unless someone has anything in particular. So we'll add for motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn, second by Sue, second by Mike, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.